Hello, welcome. This is the Town of South Kingston regular town council meeting. The date is Monday, September 27th, 2010, and the date, excuse me, the time is approximately 7:30. And I'm going to call forward now our local Boy Scout troop 44 from Mattoonik to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So gentlemen, if you could come up to the front here, we'll take your cue for the pledge.
(inaudible) Dale, will we please have the roll call?
Council President Fogarty?
Here.
Council Vice President Eddy?
Here.
Councilwoman McAtee?
Here.
Councilman O'Neil?
Here.
Councilwoman Whaley?
Here.
All members present.
Thank you, Dale. Next, we have the approval of the minutes from previous meetings from the work session of September 13th. Is there a motion?
I move approval of the minutes for the work session, September 13th, 2010.
Second.
They're moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is from the regular session from September 13th.
I move approval of the minutes of the regular session for September 13th.
Second.
They're seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. The first is a license, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to the fall music, oh, excuse me, you know what, I'm gonna actually, this has been withdrawn. Do we have a motion to remove this from the?
I move to remove license item A off the agenda.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove?
If nothing, Kathy, I move approval of this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. The first is a license, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to the fall music, oh, excuse me, you know what, I'm gonna actually, this has been withdrawn. Do we have a motion to remove this from the?
I move to remove license item A off the agenda.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we have the consent agenda. Is there anything that anybody would like to remove?
If nothing, Kathy, I move approval of this evening's consent agenda.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to licenses. The first is a license, a resolution granting a miscellaneous permit to the fall music, oh, excuse me, you know what, I'm gonna actually, this has been withdrawn. Do we have a motion to remove this from the?
I move to remove license item A off the agenda.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we're gonna move on to B, is a resolution granting the holiday sales license to Global Montello Group Corp., DBA Mobile Mart 3079 Tower Hill Road Wakefield, subject to approval by the Fire Chief in the Rhode Island Division of Taxation. The application is by Louise Marcus Esquire, 33 College Roads in Warwick. And this is a new license. Is anybody here to speak on this license?
Excuse me, I'm Louise Marcus, if you have questions.
Yes.
Otherwise, I need not speak.
Okay, well, in case anybody has any questions for you, anybody? Any questions for Louise?
This is just typical, you have market area for a mobile station.
Correct.
Okay.
I'd like to know, are there prepared foods there? There's not a deli counter, but you prepare sandwiches that are pre?
No. There's, they serve coffee, which is what triggered the Department of Health license.
Thank you.
And the rest of the things will be groceries, like cold cereals and milk and?
Correct, and other typical-
Just like a grocery store.
Convenience items, yes.
Okay.
Thank you. Ella?
Did you want to let us know your hours of operation?
The same hours that the store has been operating under for several years. No changes to that.
Okay.
Is that 24/7? I don't know what, does someone help us out here? I have no idea.
How late do you stay open?
That's a great question. I don't know. I didn't think to, I've been there, but I didn't think to ask them, but I'm certain there's not a change.
Drive by and find out.
Yeah.
It's fun.
I guess I'd assume the gas station was always open.
Do you want to tell us this is a chance for advertisement? Give her your spiel.
Well, I don't, are you looking something up, Dale?
We don't, we don't ask that question on the-
Okay, all right. That's fine. Okay, well, I think we'll just take a motion. If anybody wants to approve it.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion for license B.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Okay, you're all set to sell.
Thank you.
All right. Good luck. Next is a resolution granting a holiday sales license to Supercuts, 160 Tower Hill Road, Wakefield, Rhode Island. The application is by John Alt, License Supervisor, Supercuts Corp., Corporate Shops Incorporated, 270 Metro Boulevard, Minneapolis, Minnesota. And this is also new. Is there anybody to speak? Oh, hi. Hello. All right, could you state your name? You're not John Alt, I guess.
No, I'm not John Alt.
Okay.
My name's Jennifer Solomium, the area supervisor for Supercuts.
Let me see if anybody has any questions for you from the council? Anybody? Jennifer?
Well, Jennifer, you obviously open five days a week or six days?
We're open seven days.
Seven days?
Yes, yes.
And what? Urgency work, huh?
Yes, yes, very busy.
And you want to give us your hours of operation?
Right at this time, we're not sure. It looks like 10 to 9. Could be 10 to 8 or 10 to 9. I guess the mall opens at 10, so we're going to buy the mall hours, but we're not sure of the hours yet.
Great.
We're not open, and we're looking to open the end of the month.
Oh, very good.
Mm-hmm.
I'm sorry, I, what, where is 160 Old Tower Hill Road?
The Wakefield Mall with Panera Bread and-
Who's old spot? I'm just trying to think.
It was a brick, it was a whole new spot that they made for us.
Oh, oh.
Brand, brand new spot.
Is it near Panera Bread?
Between Panera Bread and the bookstore.
Oh.
They made a glass frontage, it was brick, and we're a glass frontage now.
Nice.
Beautiful, mm-hmm.
It's good to see some stores going in, you know, there's been a few vacancies.
Yes. Just know that you can go there seven days a week, Jennifer.
Get your hair cut, Jim.
Yeah, thanks.
Sorry.
We could go to.
I could go to.
I move approval of license C.
I'll second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
All right. Next, we're moving on to the public hearing. And the public hearing is a relative to a proposed amendments to the town code, Chapter 17 Taxation, as follows. Chapter 17 Taxation, Article 1 in general, the application process for exemptions set out in Section 17-1 and 17-2. B is all applications. Four veterans exemptions shall be filed within the tax assessors at least five days prior to the certification of the tax roll, and the applications for blind person exemptions shall be filed with the tax assessor by January 31st of each year, for which the exemption is claimed and shall be made in the form approved by the town council. Steve, do you want to refer back to this item?
Last July, the council received a letter from David Frederick. And Mr. Frederick, at that time, advised the council of his concerns that the application deadline of January 31st for the tax year that would begin with roll certification on June 15th provided ample time for a person to be able to sign up before the town would need to know what the number of exemptions were. The council did not disagree with that assessment and requested that the General Assembly pass an enabling authority to allow the town to change the deadline for application from, for veterans exemptions from the tax roll to be five days prior to certification of the tax roll or on or about June 15th, rather than holding the date of the January 31st, which is set through state statute. Local representatives, both on the Senate and the House, brought the legislation forward. It was passed in the 2010 session of the General Assembly and requires the council to amend the ordinance to effectively establish the date as five days prior to certification. The ordinance amendment as before you tonight does exactly that.
Anybody have any questions for, because do you find that we're all well aware? Excuse me, Ella?
I just wanted to let the rest of the town council know that this issue first, well, after it left the town chambers when Mr. Frederick was here, he also sent a letter with me to the Governor's Commission for People with Disabilities, and there was a forum for that. And recently, after a year, the forum was held back at URI, and I gave testimony that this was done and that the town moved this forward. And it would be very nice if the town could maybe send David Frederick a letter to let him know that this has been passed. That would be appreciated.
Will do.
Thank you.
Jim?
Yes, Steve, without going through all the lists, I was impressed with the number of veteran applications. I might let everyone know at home just the increase there and maybe the other exempt areas, if you wouldn't mind doing that.
Participants in all of the veteran-associated exemptions for the 2010 year were 1,259, with a total value of $166,700 removed from the roll. Within that, there's probably $7,000 returned on a blind applicant, which is within the category of tax exemption, but not military service-related. So it'd be approximately $160,000 to $159,000 that's associated with service in the military that would be eligible for, for this program. Veterans that are eligible receive $126 in property tax credit. There are also varying dollar amounts for other exemptions for Gold Star mothers, disabled veterans, and POWs, ex POWs. So all of those are categories within the 1,259 participants in the program, and that's up from about 1,178, if I recall from last year.
Great, thank you.
I'd just like to say that we all worked together with the General Assembly on this matter, and I think it gives, Mr. Frederick, what he had pointed out was that he had missed the timeline, and that's why he wanted it extended. So I think this is good for veterans. It gives them the added time to file for the exemption, and, you know, we want to give back to our veterans, because they give us a lot, and they're out there fighting for us, so it's good to give them whatever courtesies we can give them. And this was a, giving them extra time was a good thing.
Absolutely. Good thing to do.
Yeah, I certainly agree with Carol on this, but also goes to show that citizen participation, paying attention to something that I know I've stared at for years and didn't pick up on it. So many thanks to Mr. Frederick, Fredericksen, also on behalf of the others who are participating in this program.
Anything else from the council? If not, this is a public hearing, so if anybody has anything, I'd like to come forward on this particular item. Please do so. If not, we can, I can take a motion to close the public hearing.
I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next is we approve the public hearing, I guess, so we closed it and-
Motion.
Yeah.
I move approval of public hearing A. Second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. Any other questions? No? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. It's a public hearing item. Next, we move on to communications. Communication dated September 8th, 2010, from Christopher Gray, Chairman LNG Working Group, requesting the town instruct that employees retirement system of Rhode Island to sell all holdings of Hess Corporation held in the town's account is received, placed on, filed, and these town, and this town council further directs. What's the council's pleasure on this communication item?
We discussed this in the work session, and I think we decided that we would place this on file.
Okay. Says to place on file?
Mainly the reason was we needed more information, and we didn't feel that it would be proper to step into this without getting more information on it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move on to communication C, is a communication dated September 9th, from Mac and Jan Ferruccio, and a petition signed by neighborhood residents requesting the installation of storm drains on Juniper Road is received, placed on file, and the town council further directs.
We discussed this at the work session, and I believe we were directing this matter back to John Shach, so that he could meet with these people again and discuss the issues involved with this, with the Juniper Road area. Second.
I'm gonna make that motion second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion? Anybody from, yeah, anybody from Juniper Road would like to speak on this? No? Okay. Okay, any other discussion on the council? Nope. Hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion passes unanimously. Next, we move to comments from interested citizens. If there's anybody who would like to come forward, now would be the time, if they can please state their name for the record.
I'm Helen Allen, and I'm very concerned about the, the, what do you call it, LDD lights at the Wakefield Pharmacy. Wish you, I heard, I heard. I hope we have no more of those in our small community. And I'm not going to argue from aesthetics, because one man's meat is another man's poison. Some people think they're fine. But, boy, I'm going to be 75 soon. I think I drive pretty well, I've got a good record. But my goodness, that is, particularly yesterday, when it was about 4 o'clock in the afternoon, light was going down, that is absolutely distracting, particularly since that, that sign is at a T-square. You wait and wait for people to allow you to turn into whatever that street's called, the side street.
Cherry Lane. Carroll Street.
Carroll, whatever. There's no question about that, that kind of, it's, I'm not going to talk about aesthetics, but I'm certainly going to talk about safety. And if I can do anything else to make a statement, I'll write a letter. I don't know where you are on the matter of having any more of them in town, but I think that's an accident waiting to happen. Now, my second issue is the town bell. Are we ever going to have that town bell sound again? We spent a lot of money. I think this is terrible.
Helen, you're breaking it.
I know, I'm recorded, I know.
Just leave it alone.
You've changed, okay, it is awful not to have that town bell. It's a memorial gift. And about four years ago, a lot of money was spent to have, gee, I can't think of names this evening, the guy who went to fix it, you'll get, we went out for bids, I think you got only one bid, and he lives in town. You know who I'm talking about?
I'm listening to everything you say.
Not everybody can fix tower bells, and I think you've only got one bid, is it finally worked? I think you were involved with it, weren't you? Anyways, a lot of money, very nice guy, and I'm a friend of his, and I was thrilled that it was going to sound again. But the trouble is, it has to be wound, manually wound, and he used to do it every Tuesday. I don't know how many of you have been up in that tower. Have you all been up in that tower?
No.
Not lately, but I-
Well, I've been up there. I'm an old friend of Leona Kelly's, and her, of course, you know who used to, used to be wound every day by, every week by Leona Kelly's husband, Darwin. Oh, his name is Darwin.
He's right, right.
But he's old, and I can't do it.
I've never seen you have so much-
And I thought a Boy Scout could do it.
Oh, wow.
Wouldn't that be good for a troupe? That's the kind of thing you do. And it has to be done on Tuesdays, I don't know why, okay?
It's a stitch.
So that's my proposal, let's get, we spent a lot of money to get that fixed. I mean, I must be serious, we had a craftsman do it, can't think of his name, and I said, isn't this wonderful, we're going to be able to have the bell again? He said, no, Helen, we can't. I said, he used to have a friend who did it every Tuesday, but that friend moved or so. So I move that we get the town bell moving again. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Helen.
Kathy? If I can get that bell wound up as tight as her.
Okay. Get cracking on that one. Jim, do you have something before this gentleman?
Yeah, I wanted to respond to Mrs. Allen. Over the past week, another one of those LED signs popped up. There's one now at CVS who got in under the wire. And we'll certainly look into this bell issue. I thought you were going to mention that maybe Midas did something and mufflered it, but now I understand, it's the winding of the bell. So we'll work on that. I'm sure Andy will be up there tomorrow morning.
Go ahead, sir, I'm sorry.
That's quite all right, Madam President, town council members, now that you are all are on the edge of your seat, I hate to bring you down a little, but that was, that was an interesting proposal, to say the least. But I'm here tonight, my name is Richard Fuke, I'm the president of the Rhode Island Fishermen's Alliance. I believe you're all in possession of a resolution that was well-written, well-done, by the town in Narragansett, and I had that given to you as sort of an encouragement, talking piece tonight, but an encouragement for the town to consider structuring a resolution of similar fashion. That resolution started with a request from the town, Town and Narragansett's Chamber to talk to me, to speak to me, and their concerns, and trying to get the message out that the town in Narragansett, or South County in a whole, is very, very concerned with what's going on with the fishing industry and the direction it's heading in right now. I don't need to tell you folks that the history of the fishing industry for South Kingston has been there forever. The way it's heading right now, under federal guidelines, under state regulations, we've got some serious problems. But I didn't want to come before you tonight with the convoluted story of, the whole intertwining story of fisheries management and the problems. I wanted to give you a direction, request that you take a close look at this resolution, answer any questions in regards to it. Like I said, it's a very well-written piece, it comes to a lot of great points, and it stresses that, you know, in this particular case, Town Narragansett has a vested interest in protecting its fishing industry, and I'm sure you folks do as well.
We have neighbors here who are on fishing boats, so we understand. We actually did receive that back in July and actually approved it and moved it on from this, from our council. I don't know if you were aware of that or-
I had heard that, I wasn't sure of that, so I might understand that you all have signed off on it.
Yes.
And, you know, to make it a talking point as well, I didn't want to confuse anybody with, with the direction of the way things were going, or in this case, aren't going, but you having done that is, is an extremely, makes, makes an extremely valuable tool for myself lately, because I've been using it or shopping it around to our federal congressional folks. I just used, I just presented it to Jack Reed and Sheldon Whitehouse's office the other day as a talking point to make them aware of, of the concerns of the people of South County. So I'm very happy to hear that that's already been done on behalf of the town, and so now I can really say that you guys have gone ahead and approved it on your own right. And do you have any questions in regards to any of those talking points in there, or any fisheries questions, or?
How was your feedback from, from the?
Those offices?
Yes, those offices.
Very good. They know there's a lot of problems right now with National Marine Fisheries Service and a lot of problems here at home with our state's Department of Environmental Management. Although they do concentrate on federal issues, federal issues are responsible for those entities. Both senators were involved with a high-level meeting last Thursday with Secretary Locke, Department of Commerce, who was in charge of National Marine Fisheries Service. Both our senators were present at that meeting, and, and that meeting was a high-level meeting, closed meeting, for fishery folks only, lawmakers in regards to the issues of the problems that we're facing here in New England. They had another meeting today, that prompted Secretary Locke to come to New England today. They had a similar meeting in Boston, Senator Whitehouse attended that meeting. So these letters just aren't simply, you know, small letters that never get looked at, they, they get scrutinized and are held in, in high regard to these folks. They work well up at the General Assembly as well. It's, it's nice to get that, you know, sort of the inner works of the state up to the state level and beyond, and it gives me the abilities as the leader of our state's largest fisheries organization to do that. So it's, and it's extremely important. I don't want to downplay the importancies of what, of what you've signed off on. It helps a lot.
Rich, would it be helpful if we forwarded to you the letter that we supported, Narragansett, for your files?
It, it would help a lot. It would help a lot if you forwarded one even this late in the game to the governor's office, you know, and, and if you, if you mentioned, I was here speaking on behalf of it, it would help as well. I'm supposed to meet with the governor the 12th of next month, so those, those exercise, exercises are very important, very important, absolutely.
Jim?
Yeah, I mean, this is an incredible moving target. Who does the buck finally stop with so, so your folks can get on with the business of doing what you do best?
Yeah, that's a great question. I mean, this obviously is, is front and center with our, the leadership of our country right now. It sits in the lap of the Secretary of Commerce, and he answers to the president. So lately, you've got the largest embodiment of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts knocking on the door of the president, Senator, Congressman Barney Frank, Senator Kerry, asking and urging the cabinet members to, you know, please pay attention to what's going on here with the secretary and, and the leadership in NOAA, National Oceanographic Atmospheric Administration, under the guise of Dr. Jane Lubchenko, and, and make note that the New England fishing industry's failing, and, and it goes straight to the president.
And my second question, if I could, I don't quite understand this closure area situation where Rhode Island fishermen can dock in Massachusetts and then fish in an area. Wouldn't you think it would be one for all, all for one?
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily work that way, because fishing areas are, are, in essence, I mean, they've got closure, closed areas for spawning, they've got closed areas for, for scallops, they've got so many different areas, Area 1, Area 2, 3, 4, 5, 12 for lobstering. They have, they've got the ocean chopped up like a tourist map, and you can fish here one day and you can't fish there, and then if you've got a, if you're a permitted person in, say, Massachusetts or Rhode Island, you don't necessarily are able to fish in and out of those other states because of your past history.
Well, fish don't know their borders, so if-
That's right.
I mean, this-
I know, I know. It's, it's one of the many problems. It's tough, and it's tough. We've got a lot of failing companies in this town right here that are, that are tied into the fishing industry, and it's, it's, you know, I, like I said, I hate to bring, bring the spirit down, but the fishing industry's in terrible shape right now, and it can be fixed. We've got fish to catch, and, and our federal lawmakers know that, so they're pushing very, very hard to get more allocated fish to our fishermen that have the permits to go catch those fish, and it's just not happening. So, you know, these, again, these, what appear to be simple exercises and simple letter writing exercises go a long way. And, you know, when you've got people of all walks that are lawmakers, they, they see that, they get a feel for what people are- They get a feel for what people are paying attention to and, and what they want for their communities.
What I don't understand, though, about the state-to-state thing is fishermen out of Newport is closed off to one particular area, yet if he has a boat in New Bedford, it could fish in that area. I, I don't quite understand how the quota works between states and is it numerically by number of, you know, boats?
A lot, a lot of those, a lot of that convoluted licensing stuff gives the abilities for people that have federal licenses to come fish in state waters, in our state waters. So when I say there's problems with our Department of Environmental Management, now, now the, the fallback is when you've got our Department of Environmental Management following federal suit or guidelines, which doesn't occur in Massachusetts, they've been very resistant. In fact, they have a pending lawsuit right now in regards to Amendment 16. You know, coming up with language that works, well, what they think works, and I'm talking about the Department of Environmental Management here in Rhode Island, and then it, it, on the flip side, it, it actually gives out-of-state boats that have federal licenses the abilities to fish in our state waters. It doesn't make sense.
Didn't know that, thank you.
Tangled web that you're dealing with out there, I've, I've heard. Any other questions for Mr. Fuke?
Well, I think you probably just answered it, Richard, but my question was, why would the fishing be reduced in Rhode Island and that you, not reduced, but regulated here, but not in Massachusetts? I mean, it's got to be, it's the same water and it's the same, it's got to be affected similarly, so...
It, 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 the difference is, the federal regulations work in, in disfavor to Massachusetts the same way they do to Rhode Island. But the ideology with Massachusetts State Department of Environmental Management, it's completely different than what we have here in Rhode Island. The ideology in Massachusetts is to support the industry, help the fishermen they have right now that have licenses. Here in Rhode Island, they're still in the trend of consolidating or trying to eliminate as many licensed fishermen here in Rhode Island as they possibly can. That's what, that's what they're lining up for the continued legislation that they're putting forth. In fact, Director Michael Sullivan now has a plan, he's a legislative plan or venue or menu of, of stuff that he's going to try and have passed next month that has to do with following sector guidelines or, or these management schemes, similar fashion for Rhode Island that's already in place for federal boats, so...
Well, that sounds, that sounds good because, I mean, you, like you were saying, all of New England is in the same boat and we should be working together to try and, I mean, overfishing, if it's overfished here, it's, it's overfished there. I mean, we're all so close, if that's what they're suggesting.
Well, they're not even suggesting over, they're not, they don't even use the term overfishing anymore. I mean, that, that's such a passe term. Overfishing is scientifically been proven that it doesn't occur anymore, so even the federal folks don't use it anymore. That, that, we've, we've achieved the level of sustainability, but what we haven't achieved is the abilities to give those fish that have come back in record numbers, in some cases, 500 percent. We haven't, we haven't given any of that back to the people, in this case, of Rhode Island. So when our fishermen are starving because of the continued pressure of fisheries management, you're not, you're, you're seeing less and less fish in your fish markets.
Right.
I, I mean, it just doesn't make sense that the people of Rhode Island, or people that come to Rhode Island, should be buying a fish that's brought in from Canada or overseas. It's, it's, it's ludicrous.
Oh, it is.
Eighty-four, eighty-four percent, or higher now, is what's imported into this country for these people to make a living, the retailers and the wholesalers. It's, it's that crazy, so... And, and, and the short of the long is, this town suffers because they've got so many people, lateral industries that rely on the fishing industry, no different than Narragansett or, or the towns of Tiverton and Warren, you know, anybody, Newport, and anybody that's got fishing boats close, close at bay is, you know, they're serving the fleet. And, you know, again, our responsibility as the ocean state too, it, it just, none of it makes sense. None of it makes sense.
No, it doesn't make sense. And that, that's what I was saying, it doesn't make sense, you know, drawing a line between the states as to where it should be regulated and where it, more severely than somewhere else, you know?
It would be an easy job to, to direct fisheries management right now in the state of Rhode Island just simply by paying attention to the numbers of fish that should be going to state or federally permitted state boats on a daily basis rather than trying to come up with a, another way to, to pass some sort of crazy fisheries management idea that seems to come out of DEM every other day. And, 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 you know, you know as well as I do, the, the governor's office is the end-all for, for that department and, and that needs to be clarified. And unfortunately, we're at the, the closing gates here for Governor Kuchery, so it doesn't mean he's completely out of the ballgame, but it, it, he's been a late-arriver, for sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
Everybody all set?
Ella, I think she has a question. Go ahead, Ella.
Um, Rich, I just wanted to let you know, I did go on the website and it is very interesting with all the facts that you have, so...
Thank you, and thank you for inviting me, by the way.
Yeah, and if you see next steps that we can be more supportive, if you just keep us informed, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. I mean, I, I, I will seek, you know, further assistance from towns like the town of South Kingston, for sure. And, and again, it is a big help, very big help.
We can right now even direct our town clerk, Dale, to send down that resolution that we, you know, passed out, that we approved from Narragansett onto the governor's office.
Oh, if you could, that would be a big help. That would be a big help. And, you know, when, when any of our elected officials are in town, it always helps to ask them, "Hey, how, how are things going with the fishing industry?" You know, they've put so much energy into it lately, I, I mean that wholeheartedly. They have, they really have. You know, when they, when they know you know, that's, that really energizes them. So, you know, I'm not advocating for anybody by far, but I, and I just simply have to tell you the truth, especially Senator Whitehouse as of late. He has a new young fellow on his staff, just does fisheries issues, and they've stepped up hard on the plate just by, you know, having, you know, young blood, you know, in and out of these meetings and, and doing the right thing. So when you see those folks, ask them, "How's it going?"
That's great.
Jim?
Yeah, just a couple of quick questions. I didn't know DEM had, because of their policies, at least helped you with the reduction of rents for dock space on places like Galilee. And, um, second question, you're smiling there, okay.
I love that one.
Think I know the answer to that one, but, um, second one, can you have a federal license and state license or dual state licenses? What are the rules there?
You, you can have certain species of fish, you can have dual licenses, yes. A lot of times, if you're going to, if you're going to engage in a particular groundfish species, you can't have both. You have to usually surrender your state license to have a federal license. So we still have a very large fleet of just state-licensed boats that are only permitted to fish inside our state waters. And we, we have a large number of federally permitted vessels that are now in the sector fishing program, some of them that aren't. So it, it really is just a matter of where you can fish and where you can't fish with those permits. Sometimes, certain times of the year, it makes a difference. Like you said, the fish are, are, you know, they don't stop just anywhere, they go everywhere, so...
Yeah, so that rent issue?
Well, that's, that was an interesting point because I heard somebody running for office mention it recently as a, as a form of fisheries relief legislation on his platter and it, it, it has validity. DEM, you know, listen, I know they tossed around the ideas of EDC at one time, running the docks. I don't care who runs the dock, but the docks need to be run with monies generated in some fashion. And, and, and there are ways to tap into federal grants that could funnel into the dock situation. But, you know, right now, any money that's generated through fishermen paying their bills or not paying their bills, which has become a critical thing right now, I know there was 24 eviction notices issued to the fishing fleet, which is the reality of how things are failing. The monies generated through the docks down there go straight into the general fund, so it's always robbing Peter to pay Paul in Rhode Island to organize it in some kind of fashion. I'm always in favor of, I don't care what the state agency is, but it, it needs to be done and, and run just from that platform of, look, here's the docks, Dockmaster, you know, you run it as an agency. Seems to work for the airport or, or those kind of things, so...
I brought it up because of the newspaper articles on the eviction notices and...
Did you see that? Yeah, that's...
They are limiting your opportunity to earn a living.
That, that's the cruel reality right now and, and we've taken that a step further. Those eviction notices came out of Tom Markarian's accounting firm here in town, which puts this town on the pedestal of, Tom's accounting firm houses a majority of the ground fishing fleet in, in Point Judith. What Tom has done is given our secretary, Kathy Harvey, who works over there, the abilities to take a look at guys that have volunteered their stuff in a sort of a patient confidentiality kind of fashion and, and, and let the firm create a spreadsheet so they can track the pluses and minuses of, of life inside this new sector fisheries management schedule and, and what's coming out on both ends prior to sector and three months or four months into sectors is the grim reality that break-even is the best any boat's going to do. Most of them are, are failing. So that's alarmed Tom. Tom came up with me the other day to Senator Reed and Senator Whitehouse's meeting and, and spoke, you know, as a spokesman, an accountant to the fishing fleet, so to speak, and, you know, that came right out of your town.
Thank you.
Thank you for what you do.
I appreciate it and thanks for inviting me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Questions, no? Thank you, Mr. Fuke. All right.
We have Mr. Fredericks here.
That was quite a presentation. I had so many comments about it.
Sure you do. Could you just state your name for the record?
Bob Trager, owner of a fish market and lobster wholesale business, which I had no intention of bringing up tonight, but seeing this presentation has just been made, I'm going to make a couple of comments on it because everything he said is absolutely true, but it's so complicated that it's very difficult to communicate it to anybody, really. I mean, he didn't bring up the other facts, a lot of other facts too, that affect young people in Rhode Island. You can't get a license to fish, a young person in Rhode Island. My sons, I happen to have a commercial Rhode Island fishing license, but, and I had a federal license, I gave up. But my son can't get one, if he wants one. Can't get it. So, you know, it's, it's more than, it's even more than what was just said, but what was just said is all 100 percent true. The last month that I had to buy fish for my fish market, I had to buy from, I had to buy several times Canadian fillets because I couldn't even get them in Rhode Island. And if I did get them, I had to pay unbelievable amount of money for them, which I did. Whenever I can get them, we pay the top dollar and we, we fillet our own fish and that's why we have a reputation of the best fish in Rhode Island. But anyway, that's another story. But anyway, I don't want to bring, bring that up, but that's just a matter of fact, right, Ella? Okay, right. Anyway, there are so many things going on there that I think any attention, here's why I'll leave it, because I, I had a whole bunch of things in my mind on this, but any attention that can be drawn to it, even though you don't understand it, just the idea that the fisheries are in trouble and it has to do with complicated regulations between the federal government and the state. That's basically what it's all about. And you, as some of you brought out in your, your questions, they open, say they open fisheries in Rhode Island and you can get 100 pounds. They open it in Massachusetts, you can get 1,000 pounds. I mean, the stuff like, it's all crazy stuff. It's beyond, it's so complicated that it's not worth trying to even talk about it. Okay, I'm going to go to my original points, okay? I just thought I'd comment on it a second because, okay. Number one, I met some of you not too long ago at a meeting and I brought up with at least one of you the idea of why we cannot get this meeting televised again. And I really would like to see that done. It is, I think it's a travesty that we don't have, I don't, money, money, I don't care what it costs. I think it's that important that people are allowed to tune in to the town council meeting. So that's it, I'm going to just say it. I don't even want you to respond right now. That is what I'd like to see happen. I don't know why it's not happening and I'm very disappointed that it isn't. Okay, number two. This week on the Today Show, they have featured, and I guess it's nationwide, a focus on education. Now, you know that I've been before you not many, not as many times as I should and I'm ashamed of it. But I, I do want to say that a lot of the things that are being said right now, I might not have said them as eloquently as some of them have, but this country is in deep, deep trouble. It is not just a little money here and a little money there. It's got nothing to do with money. It has to do with how education is approached with the student. The motivation of the student is my, I would think the main thing. Students don't believe they need to have an education. They got to realize somehow, I would say it should be on bulletin boards all over town. I really do. And granted, we have, we have a little bit of a situation here that, I, I brought this up way back, but before. I think that every student in Rhode Island should get the same quality education, whether they're in Central Falls or in South Kingston. And I, I know why, a lot of people come to South Kingston because, hey, this has got a great education system. We need more than that in this country now. We need every single student, as they have outlined in that program today, which I only got to see a little of it because I had to unload a boat, I wanted to watch the president half hour on it, but I've heard him talk on it before. But a lot of the other commentary I heard was kind of right in line with what, it's a big deal. They can take a kid that was doing very poorly in one school and they put them in a school with some unbelievably great teachers and this kid flourishes. Well, we got to get every kid to flourish. It's as simple as that. This, and I don't, and I've said a couple of years ago, one of the town me, I get up, I don't, I don't care how, if it's money, then spend money. If it's not money, whatever it is, you need to do, you, we've got these experts out there. I happen to, you know, I'm an ex-guidance counselor and I don't pretend to be that intelligent and there's a lot of stuff I don't know about, but I did, I, I do see, I got eyes and I've got ears and I can tell what's going on and I do pay attention to quite a few things that are going on right now. And I don't know if the American public is, I'll be honest with you. There's a lot of ignorant people out there and that's why I'll never get elected to be town council member. But I'll tell you that, that's the truth. And I consider myself ignorant. So how ignorant is somebody else then? Some of these other people don't know anything about what, what's going on. They really don't have a clue. They just go on because we've had the easy ride for a lot of years in this country. Okay, I'm going to leave it alone. Education, whatever the town council can do to influence what happens in South Kingston with regards to education, I hope you'll be doing it. Okay, three, and I'll, I think this will be it. I happened to be watching Charlie Rose the other day and a young man, after he interviewed someone else, interviewed this young man from China. His name was Jack Ma, M-A, Jack Ma, M-A. Young guy, well, he started off with eight employees in, in China and he's running an internet service to small businesses. It has now become an international business. I can't even give it, the numbers are so high, I can't even say them, that he has hooked up in China or, but he has them hooked up in this country too, like millions of people, millions of businesses in this country. He's something like that other gentleman just gave $200 million to New Jersey. He's something like that. But money is not the thing. Here's what impressed me about what he said, and this is, and this, I'll leave it at this. He, he calls what he does a religion. And his religion is this. The customer is number one. The employee that works for the customer is number two. And the shareholders are last. And he gave a very interesting thing that happened when we had this crisis, he said where all the shareholders in his company went. You know, but his company's beautiful because he's got the formula that this country hasn't figured out yet. He has the formula. And his, and the US formula is something like this, and he didn't say this, I'm saying it. The CEO is number one and his friends. And after that, the shareholders. And on the bottom of the list is the customer. And that is our problem. Thank you.
Thank you, Bob. All right, anybody else? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
You guys are all mic'd up tonight. I'll second Mr. Trager's comment on, as far as the, the TV, getting the meetings back on TV. I don't know that you ever did a, any kind of survey to see, you know, what, were people tuning out? Were they less likely to be watching online and like that? So, you know, hopefully you'll consider doing something like that because I don't, I don't, if you have, I apologize, I'm not aware of it. And you know I've, you know, fought, or I like to use the word advocate, I've advocated... And you know I've, you know, fought, or I like to use the word advocate, I've advocated, you know, for better access for community members. So actually, had on my thought process tonight is, am I missing something when I'm watching online? Is there the ability to make that little screen on my computer bigger? Okay. Okay. I think I've tried that, I'll try it again. But if it doesn't, I mean, that's, it is a little bit of a disservice. I mean, you're trying to watch, you know, you get used to watching, especially now people have all these flat-screen TVs and everything, which I don't have. So when I go to one of my friend's house that has one, it's like, ooh, what I'm missing? But, so then you start thinking about watching on the computer to begin with.
Pardon me, I was just instructed to go ahead and say something, but as far as some, I have not seen this, like, on the internet, but having done a great deal of internet video and other things like that, there are different ways to do several things. There are also applications that are in conjunction with, like, say Firefox, which will also magnify the screen on there. The problem you would have is what format the video is actually coded in, okay? If it is coded in, like, in take four, and you expand it too large, you'll start to get grain, you know, grainy picture and such. But yes, it could actually be encoded to be a bigger picture on there. It depends on whoever's doing your website and such.
Okay, so I, I don't know what the cost of that contract was, but I don't know if that could be, it's something that could have been included or could be added, or maybe it's just a simple double-click, but I think I have tried that, and I have heard that from a couple of other people as well. Okay, so the second item I want to bring forward is from the zoning ordinance, Article Eight, letter I, which speaks to election signs or political signs. And I'm just going to read, it's not a lengthy ordinance, but I'm just going to read a part of it, which says, "Political signs are non-illuminated and must be incidental to a town, state, or federal election or referendum. Such signs shall be constructed of durable material and shall not be affixed or attached to trees, traffic signs, or utility poles, and shall not be located upon any public right-of-way nor upon any public property. Such signs shall be erected not more than 60 days prior to such election or referendum." Okay, the piece that I'd like to bring forward, which was a little brouhaha a couple of weeks ago, you know, even hit the paper, was this idea of, you know, a sign in a public right-of-way. And it's what I'm requesting for you to consider, not to answer tonight, but I'd like to hear you talk about it, if it's not tonight, at some point in the future, whether or not that section of Article Eight could be amended, because my concern is, and this, there's a lot of political hijinks that go on with this, too. So, one, it would save a lot of town employee time and money. Our town employees have to have more important things to do than have to go onto the computer screen to see exactly where that property line is. Does it line up with the big rock on the right side of the property, or does it line up with the pine tree on the left-hand side of the property? I mean, that can't be the best way for our tax dollars to be at work, and I would think that it makes our town employees not feel valued. But I think the bigger issue is that, does it infringe upon people's freedom of speech that if they have a stone wall as their property line, or a hedge on their property line? Is their freedom of speech being infringed upon by the town of South Kingstown because of that fact that, okay, if you put it on the other, on the street side of the wall or the hedge or whatever that would be, that's marked in the line by two feet? What's more important to the town of South Kingstown? People's right to the freedom of speech, or some little piece of property that really is incidental to this section of Article Eight? Okay, so that's that. Now, the second piece of that, it says, you know, nor upon any public property. All right, so, the primary day, basically two weeks ago, okay? There's no more public property, in my mind, that exists, except for governmental buildings, whether it's a school or what have you. That is public property. And actually, as a side note, I think, when I think of this, this law was probably designed to keep people from putting signs on public property such as that, parks, schools, et cetera. And also along, I remember, you know, a bunch of years ago, a candidate for local office was putting signs up and down Route One. Clearly, that doesn't, that property does not belong to an individual, that's public property. So it does keep that from becoming a problem, you know, as well. But primary day, I don't know who it was, but somebody with the local Democratic Town Committee was running around from polling place to polling place, putting up signs at these polling places. That's public property. There were no people around to be with that sign, and I would think that the members of local party, the leaders, would be aware of this law, and in fact, I know that they are, because four years ago at an election, they were calling on their opponents complaining about these signs being on the property. So I would really appreciate if our towns' leaders, and, you know, some of these people are not elected officials, would follow the laws that are here to protect the public interests. Thank you.
Any other people who'd like to speak? Please come forward and state your name for the record.
Hello, my name is Alex Kleckner. I'm a resident of East Mantounak, kind of the Snook Harbor area, and my concerns are kind of, there's a bridge on old Sukkotash that's right by the Oyster Bar, and there's some signs there saying that no jumping off bridge, and that I've seen law enforcement officers kind of speak to kids who are jumping off the bridge, and I was just seeing if you guys could kind of change that to jump at own risk, like, instead of the, no jumping. Because, I mean, it kind of seems a little bit unfair to those kids who want to jump off and then...
Remember when we discussed that?
Yes, I do. Oh, yes.
And they are jumping anyway. I mean, you go out there, and the kids are jumping.
Some kids are.
Some kids.
Not my skills.
Not true 44, absolutely not.
But when they do jump, they always have somebody on the other side of the bridge to watch for boats, and then the kids jump to, you know, so they are in communication with one another.
Yes. That's what I've witnessed.
We don't want to take the joys of summer away from you.
We want you to be safe.
Unfortunately, in this liturgical world that we live in, we want you to be safe, and God forbid a boat come through there and nobody's signaling, or you don't have anybody to signal. You know, we have to do our due diligence to make sure that you guys look at that sign and maybe think, maybe it is a busy day.
Yep.
And I'd rather see you standing here talking to us than in a hospital with a really, really bad injury. So, I know we don't want to take your fun away. I remember Jim had very vivid memories of jumping off that bridge, if I recall, from that meeting. We don't want to be your mothers, or fathers for that matter, but we really just want to just try to keep you guys safe.
All right. All right, well, thank you very much.
No, I appreciate you coming forward. I hope you do.
What was your last name again?
Kleckner, K.L.U.C.K.N.E.R.
Please be careful out there, though. Okay.
Have fun, but be careful.
Okay, Bob. Oh, you got to go up to the microphone now, Bob. You're going to jump, is that what you just said? If we let you, you're going to do it?
I'll jump with you.
You know, you kind of told them most of the truth there, but let's face it, the reason that has been changed is because you, as a town council, were put under pressure by a person in that vicinity that owns a marina, and he pushed it, or else you would never have done it. And I'm not denying that what you're saying is true, that once you're put on the spot, but I've put you on the spot about a walkway, so when somebody gets killed down Sukkotash Road, I'll bring it up to you, believe me, because it's needed. It's just as needed or more so than the bridge problem. And this young man is absolutely correct.
Fortunately, we can't put that curb in there because that is the state road, but we've heard you, Bob, on that, I understand.
I think I'm proud to say that I voted against that.
I think you might have, Jim.
And also, in my day, the bridge, that earlier bridge before the hurricane took it out was much closer to the water, so it was a lot easier to be, much braver. Not much, but, but the sign is important because the chief will tell you, just pay attention, have your buddy on the other side of the bridge if you're going to do that. It's common sense, and hopefully that'll be exercised.
Any other questions? I do see that Mr. Fredericks is, is here, and unfortunately, you missed it a little bit earlier, Mr. Fredericks, but we did have the public hearing. If you want to even step forward so we can kind of put a face to, because the people at home can't see you. But Mr. Fredericks came in last July.
I did indeed.
And had some questions about the application process for exemptions for vets, veterans. I think it was your wife who was doing something, registering for a car, if I do remember.
It was, it was, yes, my wife. Once again, David Frederick is the name. It was my wife that brought the issue up, in a sense, because of a situation with the taxes involved there. But it made me realize, too, that veterans coming back from the current wars that we have would come back with missing limbs, handicapped, would have to get new vehicles that would help them with their families to survive once they got back. At present, the current, well, not at present now, I guess, but at that time, the current policy was that, for us, we got a bill for the taxes for that vehicle three months after you were allowed to apply for an exemption for being handicapped or being a veteran. And that deadline was three months prior to the time that you got that bill. I felt that that was rather unfair to these veterans and their families, still trying to struggle now with their handicap involved in their lives also. And they should be allowed to actually submit application for the exemption prior to the time that they get the bill. And that's basically it.
Well, our apologies for not sending a notice to you earlier about this. I know you had the parade yesterday and told you about this, but we were going to send you a letter anyways to let you know that that one man getting up and speaking and bringing up a very good point opened the eyes up to some, to us and to the representatives and senators who got right away and worked on the enabling legislation and changed that for you, and that's all been taken care of now, so...
I was extremely happy to see that and to hear that at the parade, and just for kind of the record, all of my friends on Facebook are very happy also.
Good.
And that's across the entire country, including my brother, who is a representative for Portland, Oregon, well, the state of Portland, he's a state representative for Oregon itself, and he congratulated me on, and thanked me for bringing that up.
Good. Well, congratulations, and thank you for bringing that to our attention, so...
Thank you.
We've already done it, but I'm glad that you came in and everybody could recognize you, the work that you started, just one person getting up and saying something, and thank your wife, too.
Oh, I shall, and I wish more people would stand up and help.
That's right.
People that are in need.
All right, thank you, Mr. Fredericks.
Thank you.
Again, is there anybody else from comments, from interested citizens? No. If not, we move on to the town manager's report. Steve?
One item that I didn't get an opportunity to mention earlier tonight was in the miscellaneous package for 9/23. I provided the council with a memorandum advising that the town's application for an additional $1 million with the Rhode Island Clean Water Finance Agency has been approved. I've got to file a final application for due diligence purposes before it comes back to the council. But just in terms of an update, at this point, in 2002, we received the first $300,000 from Clean Water for the ISDS replacement program. Since then, there was another $1 million that was approved in 2005. So so far, there's been $1.3 million in loans that have been given through Rhode Island Clean Water to 85 different residential properties in South Kingstown for the replacement of malfunctioning septic systems, or the replacement of cesspools. We're at a point now where there's about $100,000 left for drawdown, so we need to get the next million. Allen's got 14 applications that are pending in the office at this point for funding opportunity. The money that will be made available, will be made available at a 2% interest rate. Maximum loans are up to $25,000, and there's no income limit for eligibility. But that should be coming to the council probably within the next few months, but the fact that we've put the application in to begin the process to be able to draw that down, I felt that I should provide a formal notification to the council. If there's any other questions on anything on the manager's report, I'd be glad to report on it.
Steve, why wouldn't something like that, why couldn't we get stimulus money? Heaven's sakes, putting people to work, why should we have to borrow that? That just makes sense. Environmentally, homeowners who are in difficult financial situation, this is silly that we don't have access to money for those purposes.
I think a lot of people are asking an awful lot of questions on how stimulus dollars are being used. Certainly, if there was a program that was available for, Jim, we would look to attract it, but we have to deal with the programs that are there.
I understand. Yep, thank you. No, I understand.
Any other questions for Steve? No. Hearing none, we'll move on to Mike.
Unless there are questions, then I'll...
Okay, no. And appointments, I think we're all caught up, and we have to review that the next time we get together for some appointments. So nothing tonight. So now we move on to new business. So we move on to new business item C, a resolution authorizing the purchase from Physio Controls Incorporated, 1181, one, Willow's Road, N.E. Redmond, Washington, of two Lucas chest compression systems in accordance with the specifications in an amount not to exceed $18,630, and is further described in the memorandum from the Emergency Medical Service Director to the Town Manager dated September 8, 2010, entitled Purchase Recommendation. Lucas chest system.
As noted in Keith Richards' memorandum, we're looking to replace two of the CPR assist units that the town EMS department uses. The two units that we currently have were purchased in 2008. There's a high maintenance cost associated with those units, about $4,500 a year. The replacement units are a different type, which do not have the same type of operating expense associated with them. We're looking to trade in those two units from the 2008 purchase. There'll be about a $6,000 trade-in on it, and we would replace both of the units with these more efficient units to be able to continue with the resuscitation program that EMS provides. In fact, right now, our resuscitation rate is over 20%, which is high in relation to the averages that most departments are accomplishing. The two units' total cost is going to be the $18,630, but we suspect that we should be able to save about $4,000 a year in operating expenses associated with the replacement of the batteries in the service contract that was on the Zoll units that would be turned in at this time. I recommend council approve as presented this evening.
Any questions for Steve regarding this item?
If not, then I move approval of new business, Resolution C.
Second.
Second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution authorizing a bid to J.J. Gregory, oh, no, excuse me, I skipped one. A resolution authorizing an award, a bid to Liberty Chevrolet Incorporated, 90 Bay Street, Wakefield, Rhode Island, for the purchase of one 2010 Chevrolet six-wheel dump truck in accordance with all bid specifications in an amount not to exceed $29,554, including trade-in allowance, and is further described in the memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager from September 21st. Steve?
The recommendations for the purchase of the vehicle, one bid was received, it will include a trade-in that's worth $5,000, bringing the price down to the $29,544. I remind the council that this purchase was authored... I remind the council that this purchase was authorized in the 9-10 fiscal year. We restricted the departments from purchasing any of the capital equipment replacements in 9-10 before we saw what the close of the fiscal year was going to look like. The money was placed in a reserve fund, as all dollars are from capital programs, and we're now in a position where that vehicle needs to be replaced. We recommend it be awarded as presented in this evening's agenda.
Any other questions for Steve? Hearing none, do I have a motion?
I move approval of new business item D.
Second.
Moved in second, and any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is the resolution authorizing award to J.J. Gregory &amp; Sons Incorporated, 77 Highland Avenue, East Providence, Rhode Island, for the purchase of one 2010 Bobcat Two Cat 5600 with a V snowplow, front mount mower, and a snow blower in accordance with all bid specifications and an amount not to exceed $53,290, and is further described in the memorandum from the Director of Leisure Services to the Town Manager, again dated September 21.
In the 2009-10 budget, there was also an item in the capital program for the replacement of a 2003 front mount mower that was attached to a 1990 John Deere tractor. What we're looking to do is to replace that front mount tractor mower with a utility work machine. This will have attachments, so it can still be used as a mower, but it'll also have attachments that are available for a V plow and for a snow blower. There's other attachments that could be purchased for this vehicle. What we're attempting to do is to take a vehicle or piece of equipment that was used for about a five-month purpose within the Recreation Maintenance Division and provide a piece of equipment that replaces it that can be used really year-round for different functions. One of the main things we need to do is to create greater efficiency in our workforce. We have done that in terms of joining workforces with the Recreation Maintenance, the Public Works, and our Utilities Departments to be able to have those crews working side by side based on what time of the year it is. And also to have equipment that's more flexible, that can be used for multiple purposes. This purchase, we believe, will provide us with greater utility with this and greater use capability. Hopefully, this can be used as part of the snow removal program and provide us opportunities to be able to get some of the snow cleared on sidewalks sooner than later in our snow removal program. It'll also provide us with the opportunity to buy additional equipment items that can be used on the bike path or for use in various components of the Public Works program. So, I recommend that it be awarded as presented tonight. We're also not recommending the trade-in of the John Deere tractor. What we're recommending is that, I'm sorry, the tractor will be traded, but we will not be trading in the mower itself. We'll be able to use that attachment with the other equipment that we have in the department. The trade-in value was too low to be considered.
Questions on the side?
Motion to approve new business item E.
Second.
Moved in second, and any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Next is a resolution accepting the Planning Board's review and assessment of the Growth Management Program, '09 through '11. As noted in the summary outlined contained in the Planning Board's correspondence dated September 15 and reaffirming support of the existing program goals and components through the final year of the biannual program, as further described in the memorandum from the Director of Planning to the Town Manager dated September 15, titled Growth Management Program. And I think Vin is going to talk to us about this one.
I am, good evening. This, tonight's request that the Town Council accept the Planning Board's review of the Growth Management Program is an outgrowth of amendments to the comp plan that were enacted in 2007 when we went from an annual program to a two-year program. The council may recall, not this past summer, but the summer of 2009, staff made a longer presentation and review and crafting the program in concert with the Planning Board, and it was accepted by the Town Council last September. The program is comprised of five general goals, and in brief, those are: Implement the Comprehensive Plan, Preserve Open Space, the third is Achieve Sustainable Development, the fourth is Integration of Transportation Modes, and the fifth is to Maintain and Improve Town and Institutional Relationships. The Planning Board, and there are a number of items under each goal that are noted in the annotated program summary, but the Planning Board spent two work sessions this past summer taking a look at the program and kind of taking an assessment as to where we are relative to progress in these areas. And, you know, I'm here tonight to ask the council to consider accepting their review of the program. The major work component that we've been engaged in is the update of the comp plan, which is well underway. We've had a public workshop in April, and we're planning another one shortly, and we're also dealing with a bunch of draft documents that will comprise the five-year update of the plan, and that will be forthcoming later this fall. I would note, as council president did, the Planning Board remains committed and supportive of the general structure of the program. I believe, and I've said this before, that South Kingston is perhaps the only community in the state that has a formalized growth management program in place that's reviewed on a continual basis, and I think that's served the community well over the time period that we've been engaged in this. Having said that, residential growth pressures in the town have abated significantly as the economy went to recession, and recovery has been slow and the rebound has been slow. Building permit activity for the town peaked in the late '80s, and resulting, really, that was the catalyst for our getting into the growth management mode as a community. Just as an example, in 1986, the town issued 353 new residential building permits, and '87, it was 331. March more recently, for 2009, we only saw 45 new house permits taken, and for 2010 through the end of August, we have 65 new residential permits taken. And many of those for the current year are at two housing develops in the town, developments in the town that are building out, those being the South Winds Senior Residential Community on Route 108 and the Wakefield Meadows Development off of Route 1, opposite the Government Center in the Route 1 Special Management District, and both of those are elderly occupancy-only and less, two bedrooms or fewer. For the current calendar year, only 13 new single-family residential permits have been issued to this point in time, and I had attached a chart to the memo that broke that out by housing type. We also took a look at and provided a chart for the council's review of the residential building activity between 1998 and 2007, and that chart noted an average number of permits over that timeframe of 190. So, even if you project out the 2010 on a consistent trend, we'd be under 100 new units, which suggests some recovery, but it's certainly not as robust as it was during the early, later years of the last century and the first decade of this. We have seen, as I mentioned, some increased activity via Planning Board applications for new projects, and we anticipate that trend to continue as the recession abates and, you know, times improve. It is the Planning Board's view that our growth management program will have the effect of tempering any surge in new home projects, particularly given our successes in acquisition of open space in the community. At the present, as of July of 2010, some 34.4% of land in the town is preserved, which is more than 11,000 acres. This is up by about almost 50 acres since 2009, and key acquisitions over the past year, on the town side certainly, was the acquisition of the Dominic Savio property on Broad Rock Road, which is about 13.4 acres. But one of our partners in preservation, the Nature Conservancy, had acquired, you know, 40-plus acres themselves, so, and that was at no cost to the town. And I think the Planning Board's view, and I have staff would echo that, that the open space acquisition program and the town's growth management program cannot be overstated. On the one hand, such acquisitions preserve the community's traditional land use pattern and character, and it also takes land, tracts of land out of, off the shelves from a development point of view, and many of these properties would be, you know, sensitive environmentally. I would also make note that, and we had a part of our comp plan update survey was taken of the community, and it's interesting to note that open space preservation and growth management, there were specific questions in the survey relating to those two items, and both of them were above 85% of the respondents, either strongly or strongly agreed or agreed with the notion that the town should continue to work towards growth management and as a key component of that, open space acquisition. We do continue to meet with the Partnership for Preservation with the South County Kingston Land Trust, the Narrow River Land Trust, DEM, Nature Conservancy, Champlin Foundation on a bimonthly basis to go over potential projects. That effort has slowed somewhat from some of the heydays of buying new or acquiring new land, but it's still an important consideration, and we need to be creative going forward, given the funding that is not necessarily as robust as it was in the past, and given fiscal constraints, isn't likely to be so. But with a creative approach, I think we can still be successful in that area. The growth management regulations in the zoning ordinance, the development pacing and phasing, which is basically governs the issues of permits during periods of rapid growth, that's a passive ordinance that's in place if we need it. We haven't had a period of rapid growth in place since 2001, and then it was only very briefly in place. So, we have the tools. I did run through in the annotation, if the council had any particular questions on any of those areas, I'd be happy to try to answer them, but basically, here tonight to ask the council to accept the Planning Board's review, and we have plenty of work to do in that area going forward, because it's a pretty ambitious program. It's certainly beyond the limited capacity of staff to put forward, but it's ambition beyond capacity, so to speak, but it's good to put it all on the table, so...
Questions for Vin?
I did have a chance to read it all, and congratulations to the staff, and I think the Planning Board has echoed how the community feels. What I was very impressed about was the number you mentioned, well over 500, 560 responses to...
Oh, right, when we had the survey in the spring for the comp plan update, which was patented after earlier surveys done with some minor changes, but we did it as an online survey this time. We also had it available and hard copy at a number of locations throughout the community, but, you know, we did receive, I think, 560-some-odd replies from the community, and we were able to, we're using those to craft the comp plan update and to compare community attitudes, you know, at different points in time, the 1992 Comprehensive Plan, the 2005 update, and just to see if there's been changes. But what has been interesting is that those things related to community, character, quality of life, growth management, open space, there's a pretty consistent view that we're seeing based on the survey results with past surveys. In fact, in some respects, I think the open space and growth management may be even stronger in terms of, you know, community-held values. So, I think people want to be protective of the good quality of life we enjoy in the town and, you know, direct that our policy documents and municipal programs move, you know, keep us moving and protecting those areas and trying to strengthen where we can.
And also, many thanks to not only the town, but to the others. You mentioned the conservancy, the open space partnership has been incredible, and where some of us can't find the money or step to the plate, others have, and that's what a partnership is, and been very effective and very fair. And as the survey says, we've been doing the right thing to have that kind of support.
For open space, it's pretty rare to see a single funding source go towards the acquisition. I know some of the state acquisitions, incredible number of players. There was a farm in Tiverton recently preserved, and reading about it, I think there was like six different pools of money from all these different agencies used, utilized to bring it across the finish line.
Great program, thank you.
Paperwork for that?
Pardon? No, thank you.
I was so pleased to see, I think everyone who's driven by the Palisade Mills, they've done such a beautiful job there, and I was so glad to see that mentioned in here as being concern of all the Planning Board, that they try to get...
I mean, they have certainly improved the curb appeal and done some very nice aesthetic work.
Just beautiful.
Members of the Planning Board have made it a point of note during meetings and discussion. I would add one other thing that was included in the discussion that the Planning Board made note of the Chamber's efforts this past tourist season with the free trolley. I think that was seen as a very creative approach towards moving people around our community and through our community down to Point Judith, as well as an economic development. I mean, it hit a lot of different items, and it would seem to be gaining some momentum I didn't, you know, over the period of time, and hopefully that would continue, because that kind of creativity towards traffic management or public movement of people, I think, is an important thing for us going forward to support.
That's exactly what I was going to say, Vin, about the trolley, and I know the businesses in town would like to see that continue, and I think it really was picking up momentum. It just needs more time. But I think it is a creative way to address the transportation issues, to get people around from place to place and get them to spend, you know, spend time in the town, spend money in the businesses, and maybe we should look at, you know, making that a more of a viable source of transportation for next summer, you know.
It was neat. I think tourists were probably more apt to use it than locals, but if you can convince the locals to, you know, take a free ride somewhere...
I know one of the things that the businesses were concerned about is it took, like, I think it was two hours, like, if you got dropped off in Wakefield, by the time it did its whole route, it would be two hours later before they could come back and get you. And maybe there's some way we could look into that. Obviously, that means more buses, but...
We do have a good dialogue with the Chamber and the new director, Mr. Iacoy, and I think that'd be something that we're discussing.
I shouldn't have called it a bus, more trolleys. Sorry about that.
But there's certainly enough to do in Wakefield and Peacedale to occupy a couple of hours of anybody's time.
Absolutely.
I think so. Plan.
Ella?
I just have two comments. The integration of transportation modes, I'm glad to see that we did add transportation for the disabled, and I just want to reiterate again, I think it was probably in June, they had another government forum for people with disabilities, which I attended over at Independent Square, and I would say probably 90% of the testimony taken that day, that night, was on transportation for the disabled. So, I'm glad to see it's here, and there's supposed to be some kind of a group that's looking at something that's happening in one socket that's supposed to be fabulous. So, I don't know if anybody wants to check that out further. And then the last is the Goal Five. Seeing that we do not really have a town gown meeting set up, and that subcommittee never got up and rolling, will we be requesting a town gown meeting this fall with URI? Or are there other forms of communication?
We continue to meet with the university administration on a staff level. If you want us to set up a meeting with the president for the council, we can do that as well.
In 2007, since we had the last one, so...
No, we had one. I was here, so...
No, we had one, I was here, so.
So it was 2000?
Last year.
Last year.
We had one.
We did have one last year.
Earlier this year.
So we go, do we want another one this November? Or do we want to bring it forward at a later date?
Steve, and see what the status of the administration meetings.
I, I intended a meeting last Friday at the university to talk about their efforts towards sustainability. They have a sustainability officer working on the campus in Vern Wyman's office and it was interesting because they're really, part of that is not just reducing their carbon footprint through, you know, electric bills and oil heat or gas or steam at the university. They're also looking, taking a good look at transportation issues, which I know the Planning Board was very pleased to, and talking about their relationship with Ripta, which they've really quietly done a lot of things to try to address some of the off-campus traffic issues. But it's, it's a pretty impressive document that they're, that they may be adopting formally soon and I think it would be, has some good, it can have some really good host community benefits taken to the, the longer term, you know, and a lot of things to discourage the use of vehicles, use of bike paths and car pooling and that sort of thing. So I think, you know, that was just the other day, that meeting, and I think, you know, very pleased to see the university moving in that direction and they've got a very solid plan that they've drafted and, you know, so it's some, some good stuff. And it speaks directly to that integration of transportation modes. And we've also, you know, recently had, with the construction of the face, three of the bike path also goes in that direction because I think people need to know that the bike path is an efficient way to get around the community, even if you're walking. I think you can walk from here in Town Hall to Belmont in about the same time you can get in your car, park and drive. I mean, it's about an eight or nine-minute walk. I've, you know, been doing it quite a bit lately and the railroads had a lot of power way back and they could get the most direct and efficient route and railroads never had much of a grade, it was always like less than 6% grade, so it's not difficult to walk it either, so. So it's, you know, that, that'll be positive to the community and it's something to rally around and I think people have, when people use the bike path, they just find it to be a tremendous thing and it, it does help, you know, to reduce congestion a little bit in the community.
Vin, are there any cities that still have the open-side trolleys where the trolley continues to move and those fleet of foot can hop on? Not a thing of the past or it's a safety issue or a liability?
I know Providence is, there was something, Ripta is considering some trolley runs. I don't know if they'd have them like that. I have been on, you know, San Francisco a few years ago and it does, you know, that kind of requires a little bit of agility, I suppose, but.
Yeah. All right, okay, just something to think about. I'd certainly love to use it if it were open-ended. I hate to have to come to a stop, find a seat.
Jump on.
But it'd be great for downtown traffic. And now we have a comfort station, look at another stop for that trolley.
Right, that's right.
Any other questions? You've got some work still ahead of you, Vin.
Oh, yeah.
Definitely be seeing you in the cleaning, hoping to have the next review.
Yep, you bet.
Thank you. So we'll have their motion to approve item F.
I move approval of new business item F.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes. Next is a resolution authorizing the purchase of Zoll Medical Corporation, 269 Mill Road, Chelmsford, Mass. for one E-Series hot monitor in accordance with the specifications and an amount not to exceed $31,230, as further described in the memorandum from the Emergency Medical Service Director. Steve?
We're in need of replacing a unit, one of the, the two CPR hot monitors that was damaged when it was overcome by a wave while the EMS department was servicing a client that was at water's edge. The, the unit is not reliable at this point and can't, can't be repaired. The, the town's insurance carrier will pay for the, the total replacement net of the $2,500 deductible. The $2,500 deductible will come through the same source of funding that we used for the CPR unit, unit replacements, which would be the H1N1 fund that was set up last year.
Questions for Steve regarding that item? No, talked about that before. Have a motion?
I move approval of new business item G.
Second.
Moved in seconded, any other discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. And next, I need a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Seconded, any other discussions? Hearing none, all is in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion passes unanimously. The meeting is adjourned at 9:07.